Herey Real Estate is a full-service real estate agency specializing in residential real estate in the Marion County area. Herey Real Estate lists and sells the majority of real estate in the immediate Marion area. In fact, they sell the majority of Marion real estate listed by other companies as well. They also serve the surrounding communities in the county, including Marion County Lake, Hillsboro, Peabody, Lincolnville, and Florence. Haniford Abstract and Title Company provides abstracts of title and title insurance for homeowners and mortgage lenders. They also provide real estate closings for your transactions. Why do you need title insurance? For most Americans, our home is the single largest financial investment we will ever make. Having a clear title is important to the sale and purchase of your home. Your title insurance policy is your assurance that the home you're buying is protected from any title problems now and down the road.
That's my gavel, and I called 80 to order. Let's stand and say that light is it.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, we didn't have five camps, of course, was present, and I'm a little present probably at this meeting, and I wasn't the last one because I did think that I wasn't feeling too well with that one, even though I was here. So I'll try to be more opinionate tonight and get something from the ladies. So let's go ahead and look at our agenda. Are there any additions or corrections?
I do have a change on the approval of the minutes. Those dates should be July 8th, regular council meeting, and the July 15th budget work session.
She changed it to June, and then it's July, so I just typed too fast here. Any other corrections or additions? Motion for approval?
Move the approve.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion out against. Motion carried five to zero. Are there any other items that need to be taken out of our consent for further discussion? If not, motion for approval. Move by Chris. Seconded by Todd. Say further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Against. Motion carried five to zero. Thank you, and this is back on in our audience, so I believe we're ready for you.
Thank you. I'm here today to talk about all of this. There's been questions about what was in your packet. I thought possibly I would try to address those for you this afternoon, and then just make certain that we understand about the September 9th meeting and what we intend to do as far as Marion wraps. Are there any questions of information that's in your packet?
Everybody understood what we are getting into?
On September the 9th, in one of your work sessions, I would like to have a very active discussion between HCP State University. Hope to have maybe a few people here to pick. I'm not sure. They've got a really busy schedule, and everybody's having babies up there, so I'll tip a lot of people out. So I talked with Doug, and that seemed to be the best time to schedule, you know, a very, really good lively discussion about what's been going on, where we are, what we were going to do on June the 4th, when we were going to have the joint interlocal government meetings and so forth. But that didn't happen, and so Dr. Barnes and I have decided we're going to come to you instead of having you come to a special meeting for all of Marion County. Eventually, we will have one for the general public. It'll be a little bit later in the fall, early winter, when maybe things kind of subside a little bit in the field and then find a time when it's not a lot of school activities going on. So I just wanted to come today and say, look forward to being with you on September the 9th.
Did you call her then and make sure where and so forth that we could be?
Yes, ma'am, that's what she's talking about. That's an off-council Monday.
That's an off-coun... Yes, we've already got it all worked out. And I will provide a light dinner for you, so you won't come over during our meeting. And we'll leave it here in the room where we have quite a few people of the public coming.
I was going to ask you if you should come.
Yes, yes, and Doug and I discussed that, too. But if you don't have any questions, I wanted to let you know that this Midora company was one that we looked at. It's called SolarBe, several years ago, when we first started with the blue-green algae back in 2003, 2004, and all. And we looked at the possibility of placing a SolarBe unit for aeration to add oxygen to the water of the lake there at your intake in the dam. And the Corps would not even discuss it with us because they thought it would be a possibility of vandalism because it'd be right there where the public could see. At that time, we were going to be using ropes or wires and so forth to hold it in place. Now they're using anchors. There's new designs on it where it's not as exposed as what it would have been. So we've got some new improvements that the company has made to their units, and they're being used on board to relate to what we have here in Marion. It'd be impossible... Let me rephrase that. It could be quite costly, we won't say it's impossible, to treat the different areas where we have the blue-green algae, such as your Potwood Pond, such as your Viltor Co., your beach area at Marion Co., or anyplace else. Yes, units could be placed there, too, but I feel personally, and this is something Dr. Barnes and I have discussed, but I've not discussed it with you, that the most important area to place it is where we receive our public water source at the intake. Because what it'll do for you is it'll add the oxygen to the water. It will diminish your iron and your manganese that you're having in your water at such high levels, and it will actually reduce the cost of your treatment by adding this oxygen there at that dam area for your public water source.
So you're only going to have our councils then?
Yes, and that's what we're going to do. I've got to call into Hillsboro. I've not had a call back. I thought I'd give them... I'm going to Oklahoma City tomorrow for a meeting with the Kansas-Oklahoma-Arkansas River Compact. The reason I'm going down there is the Neosho River is part of the Arkansas River Compact. It's my opportunity to sit down with people that I would ordinarily not have contact with. And I was appointed by Governor Parkinson several years ago as one of the Kansas Commissioners. So I'm going down to be able to meet other people that may have opportunities, such as what we are planning on doing for your source of water. You know, it may be that we could find something through the... I just lost the name of it, sorry. Oh, for heaven's sakes, Bureau of Water. No, Bureau of Land. And they're there at the meeting. And there's several other entities that I would not have the opportunity to meet with unless I was involved particularly with that meeting. So I'll be making a trip to Oklahoma City tomorrow, meet Wednesday, and come home. So, but that's... There's possibilities of money. It could be EPA. It could be just numerous sources outside of KDHE and outside of RAPs to assist the cities with this possible project.
Have you talked to whether having some of our staff in here for that work session is well for the water plant or anything like that?
That would be really, really good if I, you know, for Dr. Barnes. Dr. Barnes has been wanting to see it and so forth, but it's whatever.
You'd be proud to have it seen. Tell him a little bit more whether that would be something they would get good trouble to have some of our staff from down at the water plant or something like that.
Yes, that would be very helpful to have someone from the water plant there because I think they could appreciate that possibly the potential that were suggested with the SolarBe unit. It's a start. You can't treat the entire lake. We do feel that with what we've already implemented in the watershed, that we have improved the amount of nutrients entering the reservoir through the years. And so now we see that our problem is actually what remains in the reservoir from years past when the reservoir was first built. And that's what we're trying to address with this. But I cannot do it through RAPs. It has to be through some other venue. And two, I have to change the nine-element plan to be able to even address what's in the lake, not in the watershed.
So that's the reason you're taking it along this particular way now?
I'm sorry?
And that's the reason you're taking it in this watershed?
Yes, yes. So trying to set it up with counties and the cities and even possibly P-VI because they are using it as a public water source also. So it's valuable information that we could possibly assist you with your work and your costs.
Well, you know, if you don't want to dual purpose, then you might want to talk to maybe P-VI and see if they would like to come up here or whatever.
I'm going to let them know the date that I've set up. So my first contact was you, my second contact was Hillsboro. If I don't hear from them when I get back to Oklahoma, I will make a trip to Hillsboro and sit down with them.
Florence as well, too.
Well, Florence doesn't use...
Florence doesn't use it.
No, not at this point.
You know, how about somebody from out there to delay? It might be interesting to hearing what she has to say.
The county has talked about placing a unit of swim beach. When Dr. Barnes and I have gone to the county in previous meetings with county, we've talked about the SolarBe aeration units. And they were interested and wanted the information. That's where this information came from, was the request from the county at first with the county. So, you know, to all the government entities within Marion County to deal with the reservoir, deal with the county lake to get this information. I also would like to try to get somebody from the Midora company here. They've offered to come in before. They offered to possibly...
Can you give us about a timeframe that we're talking about?
It's up to you. I can... We can keep you as long as you want, but...
Well, we know what...
You know, two hours.
She's big, that's a bit...
Would it's like maybe two hours?
I was going to say, how about two hours?
An effective meeting is no longer than two hours, so...
Do you want to...
So you want to plan on two hours?
Have a two-hour meeting that particular night? Okay, then I would propose that we go ahead and plan for a work session on September the 9th at 5:00 p.m. or two o'clock.
And one of the issues that Councilman Leader and I were talking about earlier was I had put in here that we now rank number nine in priorities with KDHE. We were number 15. We're now number nine. It's not based on water quality or problems at the lake at all. It's based on what has happened with RAPs in previous years. It's what we have implemented through the funds that we've received in B and Bs, in the watershed itself. It's how we've developed our nine-element plan. It's what we've listed in our nine-element and a lot of other criteria and a public water source. But that just gives us the ability to go after more money per year, and we have to meet certain criteria each year. We're never guaranteed we're going to get that money unless we meet that criteria previously.
Thank you, baby.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Number five?
What you had in your council package was a property control or disposal request. You're anticipating having a purple wave auction to remove again some unused equipment and items from the city. And this is a request from the police department to put on the purple wave auction in 97 for Crown Victoria, as well as a couple small electronic items. And because it is valued over... Anticipated value over $500, it does require council action.
It's the Crown Victoria.
That's the man right there.
Hey, OBO.
You bet. Any questions?
What are these other items?
Video recorder and a CD player? That's a tower. Oh, a computer. A computer and video recorder.
XP.
Video camera is like one of the old types of tapes.
Oldie old cassette?
Mm-hmm.
You got it down to your place of business, and that will be where anybody could come and look at it, or you're going to bring it up here to?
I can bring it up here. Well, if you authorize it, it will be on the purple wave auction, and those items are typically put in one location, so council bidders...
That's what I'm saying, it would be better up here than down in the police. Okay, do I have action?
Move it through. A second.
Okay, been moved by Todd and accepted by Jerry to approve the disposal of the property. Say further discussion. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Mrs. Lang?
A couple of weeks ago, Rosemary Saunders was in my office getting ready for a CDVG audit, and I mentioned to her that we had been talking about park restrooms and asked her if there was any funding available for the CANSTEP program. That led to a meeting with her and Dan Hall from BG Consultants and Doug and I last week. And basically, I provided you a memo. There's two different programs that we could possibly apply for grant funds to finance the bathrooms. One is a CANSTEP program, which is basically all volunteer labor is what the city has to contribute. And the other one is a community facilities grant, which is a 25% match from the city. So I didn't know if you are interested in pursuing either of those options?
The 25, the first one, CANSTEP, one there that says volunteers, we can't have an outside contractor?
Not for CANSTEP. The program is based on volunteers, so you have to make sure you're going to have enough volunteers before you even apply for a program like that.
Okay, so what would we maybe do in as regard to restroom on that particular one?
We showed Dan, he is an architect at BG Consultants, done probably 30 or 40 of these projects for the state. We showed him the layout that Park Board had presented. He said that they could probably keep something like that and consider it a storm shelter. And that's where it actually fall into the grant is as a storm shelter. And he said it would hold probably 50 people. It would have some FEMA requirements, but it would not be a FEMA certified shelter. He would also take a look... He went down there that day, and he kind of made a recommendation, what he would say for the location on it. He would be willing to make a recommendation to the council if we went with one of those grants and decided to hire him to be architect part of it. The other thing we talked about was that water station would have to be upgraded, and he said that could be included in the cost of the grants. The city would have to come up with that extra money.
As to the volunteer hours, the construction trades class with the high school, their contributions could be considered as volunteer labor hours that could be leveraged against the work needs to be...
And build the building, then?
They would be a large portion of our labor associated with the building. The other thing is...
The other was the 25%?
That would be the city would have to provide 25% match, and then we would hire a contractor and just have all the work done. We wouldn't need labor volunteering.
Either way...
The money already prepared?
They... We talked about the fundraising that's already been done, and they said for the CANSTEP part of it, if we wanted to use that to secure the architect instead of having to go through the CDVG requirements to bid out that position, we could go ahead and use that local matches for that. We could also use it as part of our 25% match in the community facilities grant, if that's what the boards want to do.
Either of these options do qualify under the Department of Commerce CDVG program, and we are only allowed to make one application per year. So the other consideration is if the bathroom is going to cost $120,000 total and the actual cash needed to complete it under CANSTEP or other type of program is in the $80,000 to $100,000 range. Just to remind the council, typically with CDVG, we've been able to leverage upwards of $400,000 for needed infrastructure improvements. And so it's also a little bit of a weighing issue on the health of the council if we want to try to use our one shot at CDVG for 2014-15 in a project that has maybe a maximum granted benefit of less than $100,000 versus finding some other way to approach this and leaving the CDVG available for a waterline replacement or additional street improvements or...
Well, in my mind, I'm still not ready to give up on our community to the fundraisers right now. I don't know how rested we feel. I like this. The idea that I think we do have bigger projects that we want to spend some of this time.
So we're committed CDVG 13, 14, right? 2013?
They've already done the awards for 2013, which is where our street project came in.
Right, so we're out there. 2014, 15 is the earliest, so it starts July 1st next...
They would do the application process later this year and actually make the awards February of next year.
I'd like to see maybe we're looking into those grants like you had for money for your playground equipment, not that they know it's kind of smaller.
We looked at grants. We really never qualified with our playground equipment. It was mostly just fundraisers.
Yeah, but you did have a $10,000 one that way. So you did that hometown or whatever.
We didn't. We didn't do that one.
We didn't get that one?
No.
I thought you did. Oh.
They were all fundraising.
Ah, you did a good job. But then I would still like to maybe try for something like that again, too, using that other angle of the smart show that they do.
Are there any other application dates for CDVG that will be this fall awarded early next year for the 2014-15?
For other projects, you mean? There will be. I don't remember if it's September or October is the application deadline, and then it goes into the February awards. So we don't have enough time. We talked about doing maybe an application for one, and if we can get it going on into an application like the February deadline. Rosemary doesn't think there will be enough time between the actual announcement of awards and the getting of the applications ready for the next round. So we'll just need to wait another year.
Okay. Understanding where the mayor is coming from about other projects, we're at almost August 1st. We have a month to apply for anything else to possibly get $400,000 instead of $100,000. Do we have anything ready that we can submit by this? If we have nothing ready to go, we do have this project, and that could end up being our 2014 fiscal year CDVG.
If you decide to go with the CANSTEP route, Rosemary is still recommending waiting for the application in February, just because we have to have public hearings, and those would be always deadline for that application. We could probably do community facilities or do waters, or whatever. Still have time to...
The standard CDVG applications we've made in the past, I believe it's a February 20th?
That's pretty much all the dates.
Before that?
Yeah, it's always the fall that they...
So I mean, we would... We will need to identify if there's additional money. Quite honestly, at this point, if we were to do another CDVG of $400,000, we had to match that. I am... I'm getting a little debt adverse. And I would want to make sure that we put that in some project that's absolutely necessary.
Does anybody know how much money has been raised so far?
Roughly $30,000.
And once again, if we had volunteer assistance through the building trades and just did it ourselves, that's still obviously sweat equity that comes off the total price of a projected project. It's kind of... We're ineffective in the council's optimism. I want to draw that if you still think, you know, we have some momentum in the private sector to try to create an opportunity, then we should play that one out. If not, then that this is a funding opportunity that the city would have to take the lead role in.
I attended an event at the Aquatic Center last night, which I was very impressed about the numbers that were there and the event that it was. And I do have a little connection there, where I've been thinking about that maybe it'd be a benefit project that he agreed to come and do for us at the Aquatic Center. Working slowly, maybe, because it would have to be during the time when they're off down there grants, and that's only in December through February, perhaps. But John Denver and George Strait and Johnny Cash, if that sounds good singing material to you, that's what I'm thinking I'm building on right now to see if we can think about getting some money and doing a fundraiser for that partner. If, make a bid. And here's to make sure we have enough...
John Denver.
Enough volunteers and things to get this project taken, because I can't do it by myself. I need to talk to you all. And hang on, it's really partial. Is that... As to your last... Do you want anything more to do with this particular thing? It's his time then, or do you want to?
Well, I guess without any motions, I would like to have city staff work on one or the other. I mean, if all we're going to look at, and with Will and Ben, we've got $30,000 roughly, we can do not the CANSTEP, but the community facilities part of that. But if we have a bigger project, let's get that going so council can review and do what we need to do for the next fiscal year. Let's not let a CDVG opportunity go by for one of the others. If we have something more pressing than the restrooms, let's get on top of that and make the recommendations to the council for what that would be and how we're going to do that. If we don't have anything else, then let's get the bathroom, park restrooms...
You want the ultimate candidate for our round of CDVG?
Jerry, your thought like this?
I think I agree with Todd.
Chris?
I would.
Jerry?
This almost looks like a familiar feeling.
Well...
Overkill in the fact of using the architects and all of that business to do the job then?
Yeah, those are CDVG requirements anytime you're doing this.
We've had things built that have that, all that. And maybe we haven't had that, but we've got it built.
I did just look it up on the website. Water and sewer project deadline is September 26th, and the awards are made by January 15.
So let's go ahead and put his on the little burner and put some paper holders in his hand and see.
And I guess to clarify my statement upon one of the water sewer projects, it doesn't have to be a $400,000 project. If it's still an equal amount to what the restrooms are, if that's okay, that's a priority over the restrooms. You hear my...
Right.
Any other discussion? I think move on then at this time, unless Andy Lee want anything else for us? Okay, number seven?
As part of our ongoing maintenance issues with the levee, we are finding that we're not getting appropriate control over the foliage around the tow and actually over the stream of the levee with the current equipment that we have. We did try to hire that out last year, and primarily, we feel as though there's a better solution, and that is making a dedicated spray rig for purposes of primarily the levee, but also being able to utilize it through our water plant, sewer departments, and scrutiny alley. We've identified a 2002 four-by-four GMC chassis. For clarification, it is a three-quarter ton flatbed pickup that would be able to hold the spray rig. The spray rig that is coming is a 150 gallon with a boom and an additional pump that gets us the force and the height that we need to reach to control foliage. Because it is a vehicle, it kind of falls under council approval. It is going to be split between the four departments. It's only $900 per department. It was recommended that we talk to the council about it for final approval.
Jerry, have any questions about it right now? Jerry, have any questions about it right now?
Dr. Doug. I guess we need to get the weeds killed on the levee, they can't, can't get down there right now.
It's the, yeah, it's more the trees, the woody growth that we're having a hard time controlling. We just had a levee inspection today. We will have reports probably within four to six weeks on their findings, but preliminary, the biggest thing is primarily foliage control and erosion control. It feels though with our accreditation coming up, we don't want to do anything that may jeopardize our female accreditation through our Wilson Company. We have already spent considerable amount of dollars on it, so it seems like a very cost effective way to meet the objectives of both the U.S. Corps of Engineers levee section as well as the female requirements for our accreditation of the levee.
Now, what kind of chemicals would you be using here that you're going to be able to control?
If we can stay away from the water, it'll be a Tordon or a crossbow type of foliage killer, it'll just be a broad spectrum herbicide. If we get in any concerns about contact with water, they do have an equivalent of that. I don't know the name, but we have used it successfully in that area.
So we've had some staff members who've been able to use this kind of?
Yes, we have used, we have used that.
For a large scale?
Yes, it was applied last year and the biggest problem was the equipment that we had at the time did not have the boom ring reach to go across areas to get, because quite honestly, on that levee, there's a lot of areas that are nearly inaccessible on the one side. So you have to shoot from the tow or basically on the inside of the levee to get to it.
Have you gone to see the county, what they do and that type of thing?
Typically, the county doesn't have the working lanes that we deal with because they have access, it's primarily county roads, so they have roads, they have access directed off the county road. They're not trying to jump a creek there.
Do you have a hand spray to go with it too?
Yeah, there'll, there'll be primarily a gun sprayer. With the upgraded pump that we're looking at, it can actually go forty seven feet straight up in the air. So we feel as though we've got a boom, it's a five horse motor that's going to power this pump.
Is that a brand?
Hundred and fifty gallon.
That's going to have to be very much controlled though. Somebody's going to do that, so I have to know what to do.
We have people on staff that have handled lots of them.
Counsel?
I moved it through the spray rig chassis.
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor raise your right hand. Will this, what, what have we got now that will be, will be dispersed or what would be the damage?
I believe that the man who I stated that the old nineteen eighty nine Chevy S ten that's currently being used at the water plant will be sold on purple waves, so we'll probably bring that as another item for disposal. And then the white Chevy truck, which has been used for some of the spraying in the area, will be moved to replace that truck at the water plant. And it'll upgrade our city fleet by about five years between our, our transportation of the water plant and the levee, the flood control.
Yeah, I thought maybe we better mention that. Uh, moving on to number eight.
I presented in your packets an agreement with TMHC Services for an employee assistance program. This is something that I, we have with Prairie View right now, but I think because we have switched to TMHC Services to monitor our drug program, it makes sense to go ahead and use them with the EAP program also. They will basically coordinate everything together. If we had somebody come back with a positive drug screen, they provide all of the follow-up services. They keep track of the schedules to make sure that all the random testing that needs to be done is completed.
So this is not the one we're presently using?
We are presently using Prairie View.
I guess I thought it was this one.
This is the, the company that we use for our drug testing. And we just started like last year.
Last year, that's what I thought. So this is just a continuation of and attitude?
It's in addition to that.
Okay, now, let's go again, because I really didn't read it, knowing that I, I was thinking that I already know what we were talking about.
What TMHC will do is they will provide employee assistance programs for our employees and we provide that for our full-time employees. So twenty six employees for a dollar fifty a month, it's going to be eighteen dollars per employee per year. It is an increase of eight dollars from what we are paying for Prairie View.
Okay, this is more for what I've kind of proposed, is that correct?
This provides assistance for anything, if they need assistance with financial management, drug or alcohol, family crisis. It also does provide assistance for their family members that live in the household.
In effect, we have two plans, one was testing and then if there was a problem, they send them over to another group like Prairie View. Whereas I think Angela's recommendation is we keep it all under one house, we have better monitoring control, better follow-through, better employee care if we do have to get anybody in the system.
I did check with them as far as if we have someone that needs counseling services. She couldn't tell me right off about if Prairie View was included, but she said they do find somebody in the area. She suspected that Prairie View probably is included, so it is not that employees will have to travel or anything out of the area.
I'm going to move approval of this service for a second.
Second.
Second by Jerry, any further discussion?
Yeah, I have a question. If we pay these folks and then someone has to go to Prairie View, do we have to pay for the, the visit to Prairie View?
This plan covers the initial consultation and then if Prairie View decides, or whoever they go to decides that they need follow-up treatment, then it goes to the employee's insurance or their responsibility to cover the sessions. But the city's includes one consultation in the policy.
What's the same?
It's, it's the same as what we have with Prairie View.
Is it the same as what we have right now with Prairie View? Do we pay a monthly fee to?
Prairie View, we pay an annual fee of ten dollars per employee.
That doesn't include the drug testing?
It does not, it just is the consultation services.
This would be eighteen dollars a year per employee and include drug testing?
The drug testing is a separate policy. This, what this will give us is an actual policy for our employee assistance program, which we don't currently have in writing. They will follow up monitoring, they will provide supervisor training and employee training, and I believe that training is annually, just kind of a refresher to let everybody know that we have a plan in place and what services they have.
Councilman Dear, in the business I came out of, by having a unified front from an employee relations standpoint and employment law, by having the uniformed process, we were able to have full-time employees sign what's called a last chance agreement if they came back with a positive test. If at any point they failed to follow through with that and termination of employment occurred and we had no liability as an employer then, because we were able to, the testing, the service was offered, it was their rightful decision at that point and then legality insulated and protected us as the employer.
That was my next question, we don't have a written policy at this time?
We don't for the employee assistance, we do for our drug testing. And another benefit by putting this all into one is because they're doing our drug testing already, they'll take over the employee assistance. We deal with drug, positive drug screening so rarely, but honestly, on staff, we don't have all the knowledge of, you know, when the drug test has to be done, how many follow-up have to be done. They have all of that information and they would keep track of it. They have a call center that if we had an employee that had a positive test, that call center would automatically be notified. They would contact us, tell us what form the employee needs to fill out and then make sure the employee follows up and it has all of the drug, the random screenings is required.
Do you, do you know that we'd still be in the same random pool, but?
Yes, this will not affect the drug testing policy at all.
This is addition to the drug testing? It's more like formalized?
It's a replacement and a replacement of what we have for an employee assistance program through Prairie View. We're going to switch to TMHC if you put this policy.
Maybe boiling it down, say bucks more per employee, twenty six or two hundred and some dollars more a year to have everything in one house. So proper follow-up, we don't violate DOT regulations, there's conversations or communication between any outpatient therapy and any text, any drug screenings or re-screenings necessary. It really does kind of protect the city from making sure that we don't drop something between intervention and the drug testing.
Prairie View does not offer the drug testing?
Not that I know, not that we've heard of.
But these folks will be a long ways from here.
They are out of Topeka.
Topeka, so.
But they're in here to do the contacts.
The contacts are typically by phone, the training, they will come out and do the training. Honestly, I've had no problems with them. They, they outsource the drug testing part through Kelly Compliance. I can call when we have a new employee and they're willing to be here the next morning. If I call at four o'clock in the afternoon, they'll be here at eight o'clock the next morning.
I was just thinking, someone who's affecting probably needs.
Oh, no, no, they can still, they'll find somebody in the area for sessions, consultations.
Because Prairie View is so close by.
Yeah, and she said they typically work with all kinds of mental health facilities and she thought Prairie View would be. She didn't have access to it with her coffee the other day, but she was sure Prairie View would be included in that list.
Other questions? Any other question? All those in favor raise your right hand for approval of the TMHC services to be provided and as the EAP program provider. That it? That's good, okay. All those in favor raise your right hand, opposed? Motion carried five to zero. Yes, we're ready for the big one.
We're ready. All right, twenty fourteen budget. Everybody got in their packets, the twenty fourteen budget, which includes all of the state reportable forms that go up to the state for our budget, that goes to county and then they file. Also has our individual line items per department, the expenditures associated thereof. Probably what most everybody here is interested in is as you go through the first set of sheets, the very last sheet, which is enumerated page number fourteen for the notice of the budget hearing and the proposed budget for twenty fourteen. The new budget goes from sixty three point seven mils, the tax levy, to sixty six point zero nine, which, point zero zero nine, which is approximately two point three mil increase on this budget. And I will answer any questions you may have on that.
Increasing the transfers of two hundred thousand tops to the riders.
Where would you find that?
That was on page fourteen as well, it says less transfers, I know it's the thirteen. It was two, seven hundred twenty-two and then it's now nine hundred.
Under our general budget as proposed right now, additional transfers needed to be made from a utility fund to the general fund to keep the amount of the mil levy that's necessary on the side of the tax levies from going any higher.
So that's what we'd ask at our budget station?
We were talking about trying to do some sort of blended version to try to keep the mil levy, if it need be increased, as low as possible, but also supplementing through transfers. I've done initial analysis of our financials for utilities for the first five months of twenty thirteen and primarily refuse, water, wastewater running about like we anticipated. We did have a slight uptick in our electric sales thus far and we feel as though our estimates for revenue are very much on track.
Question about that part?
What is the two point three oh three increase, like two dollars ones?
General bills, nine thousand?
It's nine thousand seven hundred ninety-two dollars.
Twenty one thousand, so, so. Your number is right, it's twenty three thousand seven hundred forty-eight.
Seven, repeat that again.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty thousand.
Twenty two thousand seven hundred forty-eight.
That's a mil?
No, no.
No, that's a double one.
Okay, well, I was going to say for a mil, it's eight thousand?
Nine thousand.
Eight thousand seven hundred.
That's what it had to be. I thought I heard.
Nine thousand seven hundred ninety-one.
Nine thousand seven hundred ninety-one point nine eight.
The man in there, I'm going to speak for myself. To me, you've got a federal government that's cutting, you've got a state government that's cutting, and here we're not cutting anything. I mean, why can't, why do we even have to raise it when we can cut some more somewhere? That's my view. That, that's the easy way, but a lot of people get me up just, it's, it's just because they're doing it, you know, it's just.
Look at your, what I'd asked Angela to put in through there, we've talked about this is a building increase of two percent for employees and if you have a chance to look at that particular, if you're going to have any questions about that.
Now, we got a backhoe that padded numbers in here, fifty thousand dollars. You got, is twice, does that mean twenty five thousand each department or fifty thousand times two?
Fifty thousand times two, the estimate from.
That's padded, that's big time.
Well, I, Jerry, I actually called a Murphy tractor in Wichita and they said it was a hundred and thirty thousand dollar unit.
Or new one.
That's correct.
Why do we have to have a new one?
Well.
I'm, I'm a little farmer, I can't go to fielding with these brand new big tractors and the city marries the same way.
But if you get a good one, I mean, a good used one, you're going to try to get that one, correct?
Oh, yeah, a good one.
Okay, but then that's the same way here, we can pick up a used one.
But my point is you're padding the budget so to make sure you have enough money.
But he just said it was a hundred thousand, a hundred what?
The, the question, you're not necessarily, we're not talking about padding, your question is new versus used.
Yeah.
The budget proposes new. So based upon a new assumption, the budget is not padded. However, you're saying consider a used one that would save twenty, thirty thousand.
But that's still in here, which is raising that.
Correct, well, it actually is coming out of the equipment reserve, which does that.
It's still reasonable.
And if you get a good used one, I suppose that you were hiding, look into it.
Yeah, as the discussion's been made before, a budget gives the authority to spend, but it doesn't necessarily say we want to spend it.
But I'm a little, that's giving you free gratis and I, that's what I'm trying to watch.
And, and that's why the council votes on us.
I know that, it's, it's something that could be slipped through and.
Have you looked into anything of the used, I don't know that you're out there.
Kaidoff has a lot of stuff out there.
Well, actually, I have already registered with the federal, what is that? Federal surplus, because we have to be registered federal surplus for state surplus to recognize. And on the dump truck, we were looking at a potential picking up a state truck that has a tandem axle with a snow plow and a salt spreader for twenty-two to twenty-five thousand dollars. What we have done is the staff has said this is what the budget could look like and it includes for purposes of this discussion, a brand new backhoe and a brand new electric bucket truck and this used dump truck. So that's the budget that you see before you and the council then decides how they want to proceed with approving or modifying.
Now, and your fence around the, the property, do we really need that?
Well, now we've got the money to do that.
I don't know.
A hundred to two.
Twenty thousand dollars.
Well, it's still, we've got that money in the bank.
Where do you see that?
I don't know, in the budget last week, in the workshop.
Is this one, that's our purchase of security fencing?
Yeah.
Okay, on the five-year, on the five-year plan you have, which is the longer legal sheet, that is what our departments work off of as kind of the wish list. As far as the budget line items that's in there, much like the ten thousand dollars street ceiling, the ten thousand dollars, there's another ten thousand dollar we have in there.
Well, there's alley repair.
Yeah, there's an alley repair. Many of those things are not in this budget. Primarily from an equipment purchase or from a ongoing expenditure standpoint, we're really talking about the backhoe, the electric bucket truck and the dump truck for capital purchases. Items such as the. Items such as the downtown alley repair, the valve replacement, valve replacement program we've talked about for our water line improvements. That is, as we get down the, down the road on twenty fourteen, if we have those additional budgetary items, we can take it out of the units, but they're not figured into the actual twenty fourteen budget. So not all these line items are in the twenty fourteen budget. This was the discussion point we started with a month ago. And this is what we actually called out to try to make any changes to the budget as palpable as possible.
And I'm just, and I apologize for missing the planning session. You just mentioned the dump truck that, that's not in fourteen on my sheet. Or my, or it looks like it's in two seven, twenty-seven.
Uh, yeah, that was an additional one, it is not in the sheet, you are correct. That has been moved up from the twenty seventeen estimate, that thirty thousand. We're looking at right now, we feel so we can get a dump truck that needs to be replaced in twenty fourteen. And we're anticipating about twenty-five thousand, that is in the, in the capital reserve, uh, equipment reserve in this twenty fourteen, it's just not on the sheet, or we moved it up from the sheet.
Okay. But the ninety-five thousand dollar bucket truck is?
It is.
That, that receives.
That's a lot of money.
What's the plant upgrades over there for twenty seventeen?
Plant upgrades was, well, we're going to utilize some of the atrazine lawsuit money to dredge out the two water looking.
So you think it'll come in fourteen?
At this point, if we did have to do that, K D H, as we discussed in our work session, K D H says that we're fine with it. We just don't know what year they're gonna come in and start saying we need to get that dropped.
So we better start being prepared for it.
Right, and that's capital.
I know that's in the water. But that's money we already have, a hundred and fifteen thousand. Thereabouts.
We've, we've kinda, we've kinda had that discussion, the, the cash from the settlement went into the capital improvement line item.
It was water.
Underwater in utility.
Yes.
So it actually helps our cash reserves in the utility fund for beginning balances of twenty fourteen.
The largest part of the increase is in the equipment reserve fund?
Jerry, you wondered for the.
No, I'm sorry.
One project you talked about, the line cleaning, but that was ten thousand.
Is that because of bond interest?
Special highway, it looks like it has the largest and that's primarily for bond and interest payments on this street improvement project.
So twenty thirteen bond interest?
In principle. Twenty thirteen principal is a hundred thousand dollars.
Yeah, a hundred twenty-two thousand.
Those are just estimates right now, obviously, we haven't done the bonds, we don't have any amortization scheduled, but.
That's what's coming up.
That's kinda what we're shooting for.
In that area.
It has bonds.
And you figure service will be on the half of the private vote, so.
Not knowing what the bond market's gonna do.
But rather than, oh, well, we could pass this as is and we're thirty thousand short because we didn't figure the big bond interest rates between now and sale of bonds.
If I remember correctly, I think we figured those principal interest payments based upon a full face amount of the bond and you saw the memo that I put on your desk concerning the street improvement bond we do, we're thinking worst-case scenario, maximum that we would need the bond for, we don't anticipate taking that full amount even when we go out to sell the bonds.
So in order, in order to keep the village where it's at right now, you have to find another twenty-three thousand.
We could, we could increase the transfer from the utilities or find ways to cut it.
We're gonna have to quit.
If we keep transferring, we're cleaning our cash reserves.
How many months do we have so we're not like Detroit?
The last time I figured it and I haven't done it, about a month and a half, we had about six weeks cash reserve.
Six weeks.
Six weeks.
That's not much.
That's not much.
So is that twenty-five thousand dollar dump truck a necessity this year?
If, if you're asking for me to, to make a cut one place or another, I would have to agree with Jerry. We would have to find something that's a three or four-year-old unit and try to save money on the used versus new. But the equipment itself, we've gotta have some, we've gotta have some replacements.
And, and to me, that's what every city has been doing, they've been using their things to death. And already, they don't wanna do any more than what we've been doing.
The anticip, really, the, the concept behind this and, and potentially it's poor timing. But what we have done in the past is purchase units that have fifty percent or sixty percent of their life remaining. So that when it comes time to replace them, it is, we've hammered them until they go to a purple wave and we hope we get three thousand dollars. Versus if we were to be able to upgrade our fleet so that we have newer equipment that when it comes time to then turn it, you gotta eat the nut on the front end to try to get the initial investment in place. But when we do need to replace that equipment, we can sell it when it still has a fifty percent life and get that thirty or forty thousand dollar trade-in on new equipment. Typically, because of our government status, we get a better break on new equipment than we do on used equipment. Cause on used equipment, we've gotta go out into the open market versus typically, now, a K-Dog may be a small change to them. But typically, what we do is, much like the backhoe, it's a hundred thirty thousand dollars if we individually go out and buy one. They take about thirty thousand off for a government just because it's a government entity. So it's, it's a, it's a mindset of trying to get our fleet that is dependable, newer gives us a greater capability of a trade-in value when it comes time to replace. It's, it's as much of a, an approach as it is, nobody's right, nobody's wrong, so.
But that's when the maintenance, maintenance, maintenance comes in.
Are we actually replacing or adding to the home office?
We would be replacing the electric truck and the dump truck, we would be adding to the backhoe. But keep in mind that backhoe that we have right now is at the end of its service life. There may be times where we have a backhoe working on, this is the paradigm, we'd be working on the new backhoe on a water leak, trying to get the water reestablished to our customers, but we may also have a grave opening. The older one can still open a grave, the newer one has the abilities to remove the large chunks of concrete, the heavier equipment that is needed for water line, sewer line replacement or repair.
Nah, you don't, you're not gaining that there. I thought you told us about that loader, that old loader was gonna go to the tree dump and I have never seen it go back south. It's always the new one. So I don't know if I agree with that, so.
Do they use the old wood down there?
I was shaking down.
Yeah, we, it's, it's primarily used if the main loader is currently being used. Um, if, if all we do on Friday is go push up trees, they're gonna grab the new loader. If the new loader is out doing other work, clearing trees in the community and we need to push up the, the tree dump, then the old one is utilized.
I do agree with them though, that possibly the old ones could be just go ahead and work even if they're only using it in one place and, and get, really let good luck out of it.
Well, I will show you the dump truck that we're anticipating to replace and although you make that determination.
You mean I don't wanna drive it?
I don't know if it'll start. And the electric bucket truck, we have had issues, as mentioned before, it's got a motor in it that has some maintenance issue long-term and mechanics have told us down the road that it is going to be a four to six thousand dollars a year for replacing the injectors and at some point, the control module goes out and it's a total repackaging of the motor within that. The boom itself, we've, we had a couple gray areas at our last electrostatic chest on it. The insulation has started to crack on it and is an eleven-year-old boom. So when you're starting to talk about having guys up on a twelve-five line that barely knocked them ground out, drew a faulty boom, it did pass, but those don't have an indebted life.
You want it to be safe, that's for sure.
It doesn't have an indebted life.
But, uh, that's for sure. For the unsafe equipment, that's just as bad as to.
I was just asking from a, from a logistic standpoint, if we did say we don't wanna do anything with that or then instead of transferring it to.
We would reduce the transfer from utility fund to equipment reserve and increase the transfer from utility fund to general fund. That would result in the elimination of the mill increase.
One more time.
Reduce the transfer from utilities to equipment reserve, right now you have it a hundred and forty-five thousand and increase the transfer from utility to general fund. So if you did a twenty-three thousand, whatever it is.
Are we robbing?
You're basically still taking the same amount of money out of the utility fund, you're just redirecting where it goes.
That's it.
Just wiping out, if you reduce just the expenses in equipment reserve and don't change anything as far as the transfer, you're not affecting the mill because the mills ran off of the general fund in this case.
Your cross, I'm going to take it that you hadn't said anything about the cross two percent. Increase in the salary is okay, but most everybody, since you haven't mentioned anything more.
Doug, with, have, have we, if we don't purchase some of this equipment, obviously, our maintenance costs is gonna be higher on stuff that is older, is that factored in or truly if we're going to not purchase, wipe that out? Would that be fair then to our maintenance budgets for maintaining existing equipment?
If we don't spend the money on purchasing new, then we know we've saved that money in total, but then the, in general, but then it would just be specifically, are those departments needing more money for maintenance of existing? I would say that's coming down to some pretty tight accounting that I can't really respond to. I don't anticipate there being a huge amount.
Did budget for the equipment that we have already, we did budget for those.
Well, one more serv, well, one more service year add that much more to the maintenance if we don't replace it or something else, I think the answer would be most likely no. Except in those situations, especially for that one truck, it does have that, that motor that when it does go, we're not gonna have the vehicle.
And that bucket, I mean, that backhoe, you've been struggling with that too, if you're not.
I, I think at this point, what you're really talking about, we, we feel confident as though the equipment that we've looked at having does have appropriate maintenance on it. If you were to, instead of going new, trying to find something that has some service life taken off of it that still has some serviceability to it, that you could save that out of the equipment reserve and then be able to still have the maintenance necessary in the utility departments to maintain it. If we run them out another three or four years, I, yeah, obviously, logistically, you would say you'll have higher maintenance with older equipment.
Or repair, I think maintenance is the wrong term, as you said. General maintenance is, major repairs, and maybe you're lumping that on.
Repair maintenance is, yeah, in effect, you're gonna have more things fail beyond just oil changes and, and your regular service.
Having two backhoes is doubling the maintenance, uh, plus potentially the repairs on the, on the holders, so. I, I can't disagree with Jerry, I, I would rather see us find twenty-three thousand dollars just maybe like we mentioned there and, and do that. I, I would say though, that if we were looking, I, I don't see anything to say we need to put in the budget more money for street repairs or maintenance. We're doing projects here that are catching up from the past and they're one-time deals, but we, I, I see nothing in here yet that would say we are dedicating a hundred thousand dollars, fifty thousand, whatever the amount is, to annually taking care of streets so we don't get caught up doing million-dollar projects every five years and which overall will increase our indebtedness plus our annual payments, so. If we had something here that was a mill increase that was stating, hey, for this mill increase, we are actually going to be hitting three or four streets with repairs every year or even if we don't, we at least are putting that into a street repair fund that makes some sense. I, I can do that, cause I think, I believe, we're behind on that and especially Eisenhower and I think we've talked about that, is that before anything bad happens, we need to spend maintenance money to reseal that, recover that, the slurry deal, I remember Darren, Darren talking about. I don't see any of that in here yet, so before we get in a big argument over, over equipment, the foreside is building enough of the budget to take care of things when they need to be taken care of before we have to wait and make twenty-year bond payments on, on projects that shouldn't.
Like, one of those issues was street ceiling, you know, put ten thousand dollars in there every year to make sure that.
Ten thousand dollars is sure not much to take care of our good streets.
Okay, fifty thousand.
I mean, you know it isn't.
I realize that, but we also need to make some efforts into maintaining the stuff that we have.
That's right.
I mean, this is exactly what they, what Todd's talking about. Is that, you know, Cedar and Eisenhower were laid down four years ago? And in five years on asphalt, you should do some sort of slurry coat, something to rejuvenate that, that surface.
And have somebody that knows how to do it.
Well, and have the equipment, that'd have to probably contract.
Right.
I'm not, again, I, I understand where Jerry's coming from if we're thinking the community, community's gonna be around long-term, it's making some of these decisions that aren't, we're gonna, yeah, arguing over one piece of equipment. Maintenance and repairs long-term is not a fun discussion and harder maybe to wrap your mind around, but that's something I guess I'm more supportive of because it's very painful when you have to come up with multi-million dollar projects just because we deferred maintenance or rehandled repairs, so. From my standpoint, twenty-three thousand, we can cut that out of the budget, we can adjust that through the approach to purchases. That's not hard. If we need another fifty thousand dollars that we're setting aside for, uh, street repairs or bridge maintenance or, uh, curb replacement, that makes a little more sense to me, but.
Right, because what we've got right up there has been maintenance.
I, I'm kinda agreeing with Todd on this, but also I'm just thinking, you know, your equipment here, you could probably take ten percent out of that and still be able to buy the equipment. Close to, that's seventeen thousand dollars. And another five from someplace else, you've got the twenty-two thousand, just to, not being an economist, but off the top of my head, it was like, it could be possible, but I, I think. But I, I think we need to get some kind of funds going for repairing streets, maintaining streets, and not have to put these million-dollar bonds out, which then ties up our money for the next twenty years. Once you do that, you're really hamstrung with being able to do anything else.
So if I understand, what we need to do is probably, street and alley is the one that comes off of our tax levy because it's not supported by a revenue stream. So if we were to look forward, hard to believe a year from now, and look at 2015, that maybe the support from the other utilities to hold up street and alley would not be increased. But then because of a program associated with street and alley improvement and repair, that may necessitate a mill levy increase at some point, that, that would be easier to handle than us trying to, you know, supplement street and alley with other revenues from other, revenue streams from our utilities.
In my mind, and maybe the voters don't see it this way, in my mind, that, that puts what the priorities are.
So if they're paying taxes, they see a new street or a resurfaced street.
Exactly. And that's kind of what I've been trying to put across too for the last six years. Do we have to come up with a plan? We've had that up there for quite a while, and it's still just there. Now, I bet you we could find some more streets. It just needs to be changing colors too. But we haven't maintained those yet. So what are we going to do to start showing that this is how we're going to maintain this and keep it going on for five years, not just one year and pull those, those particular sums out of it where we can find them?
Okay. So here in the comments thus far from the council, we will take those recommendations and need to put this back on the agenda for the next meeting for final approval so that we can get it published in the paper and have the public hear.
Well, what I'm, I'm thinking that you've said Christian has come up with some good plans for improving our electrical thing. Now, we need to see before the street and alleys. I think that that's what I'm saying here. I'm wanting to hear. And hopefully, we're going to be able to see his plan too and go through what he has planned.
And don't get me wrong, equipment is important. I grew up in a farming operation and I've run junk before. I, I understand balancing what is important is tough in today's environment. But adequate equipment and, but actually seeing our tax dollars are going to something that we can use on a regular basis is very, I think, very important.
Yeah. Streets are very important. The public expects to have good streets and they keep paying more tax money, and it's not happening. Why, I think we need to get some kind of a long-term plan in place to start replacing one, two streets that pay for it, kind of run a bond in the next four to five years.
Go through this, I think you've got to, this is kind of what we'd like to see. And this timeline concern because that's getting, this is beginning to see what I was going to see. How are we going to get this done?
I, I actually left it, yeah, I didn't bring, I didn't throw one in my deck. I was just looking last Friday, trying, because of the street project, there were some questions as to what the timeline was for that. And so the press has, and council, I'll give this back to you. Basically, it's just a timeline of what it's going to take to implement the CDVG street replacement project. And in effect, we will be ready to actually award bid sometime mid-September.
Right. So see, if we get more things like this, this is showing that we are working. When we see timelines and deadlines are coming, why, then I think that makes us more prone to make use of our monies more wisely.
Well, and, and what we can do is, I can try to modify a little bit for 2013. And then would the council like to have one more work session then, a week from tonight, to look at that before we actually have our meeting on the twenty-second, or the fifth?
So at the next meeting, you would like, we have our off...
We will have a, we will have a deadline, so at the next meeting, the next regular scheduled meeting, we would need to agree on what the budget will be. Would you would like to have another work session a week from tonight on an off-council Monday to review the changes that you've requested here?
Now, would you choose to come up with the fact that we can wait till next Monday or not to meet deadline?
To meet deadline, we need to be ready by the next council meeting, which is August fifth, to say, yes, we're ready to publish this budget, so that it'll go in the paper on the seventh. That will give us the ten-day requirement so that we can have the public hearing on August nineteenth, which is the last council meeting before the August twenty-fifth deadline. So if you want to have a meeting next week to talk about changes that we may make, that way you have everything in line and are happy with what you're going to see on August fifth.
To talk about even the this week, but I know after I got home, I saw that the county mayor is coming up this week.
I will be here next Monday, so, but I'd like to come in before. And Doug, I realize that given this, be it by next Monday, even in two weeks, you're not going to be able to come up with a, a ten-year street repair. That may not even be able to make it in this budget. That doesn't mean we can't amend the budget next year if we come up with a, a different plan or a plan. So I, I'm not expecting huge things in a week. But maybe we can adjust this a little bit to get, get through and then actually work a little bit more on, on planning.
What, what I have in my head is this five-year capital plan, having one dedicated only to streets. And then address curbing, gather issues, address what type of streets they are, what kind of maintenance we can do upon them. We even maybe isolate concrete versus asphalt and...
Well, and brick. We have, we have three mediums and we're, and we can't just throw out that we're going to replace all brick streets with concrete or asphalt.
Yeah, it's, it's going to have to be a matrix situation because we have different situations based upon the substrate, the type of material these streets are of, and what our condition of our drainage is, what the conditions of our curbing gutter is. So, yeah, we can, we can start one down that road.
I'd like to see if you, like, next Monday, when you guys get the modifications made, so we can look at it.
The, the, the quick and dirty modifications here are primarily just reducing expectations of new equipment down to used. Those savings then can be transferred differently to make up the difference in the general. So that one's pretty simple. What I'd be curious to do is, I've got this week. Now, if there's a way, we can find some way, because if we reduce our expectations of new equipment versus used, we should save more than two mills worth. And so maybe this is where, like, we had taken the street ceiling of ten thousand dollars out of this budget. I'll get some prices and maybe there's a possibility we could still get a fifteen, twenty thousand dollars in a street for 2014 to at least maintain the more recent blacktop that's laid down for maintenance purposes. Eventually, street and alley, though, it always comes out of tax, you know, it's, it's, it comes from a tax levy. And, and there will be a, a point, but I understand from a political standpoint, you'd probably rather, if you've got to raise taxes, you want to at least be able to point to some streets that have been improved instead of saying it's coming. I understand.
Well, we've, we've been sitting here saying, it's coming, it's coming, it's coming, but it hasn't come. I mean, yeah.
And, and you've got to understand also, some of that's just by the sheer necessity of the CDVG.
Right. It takes a long time for this, and it, it's, it takes a long time. We're all of a red tape to come together, I guess we could say, but... I think that that's it. That's, this takes planning. I mean, you've got to say that this takes a long time, so if we're going to do this, we better start early enough that we need to be planning and that we have, I'm glad we started. Thank you, because that's just exactly what I've been working for for six years. So now you've got, got maybe a start.
So confirmation Monday at five?
Yes, we're going to do it at five.
Twenty-nine.
As, but not before then. You know, we've talked about that in another work station issue this week, if it would be more convenient for anybody or more convenient.
We can get that out. I'll get them out on Friday, and we'll do a meeting on Monday. We should have that.
And that's what we said. Work station, five o'clock on July the twenty-ninth, correct?
Sounds good to me.
Department heads, I want to know if there's any, been any work on the easement damage settlement.
I've been trying to reach the landowner and not had much success, so please see me afterwards if you can help.
I think you need to see this guy right here for, for this easement damage settlement. He'll tell you. Okay. Marty's, do you have anything more for Marty?
I can answer any questions you may have. I don't have anything to add on Marty's, except that we did have the levy inspection today. And if we get a chance to have some hot dry days, which seems kind of strange in July, we do anticipate pouring concrete at Cedar and Main.
What is he saying about mosquitoes and mosquito control and so forth? Is that going to become a little bit of a problem with everybody leaving their tires and things out there and gathering the water?
Typically, our fogging program only occurs when we have events primarily around Central Park or the downtown area. There are briquettes that are dropped in at least the streaming beds or some of the larger bodies of water throughout town. But as far as, I think it's primarily if we feel like there's a huge infiltration.
We've gotten foggy now.
Not recently, no.
Hurting.
You have it?
My birds have been getting them, I think. Could be birds.
Could be.
They've been getting a lot of them.
They have.
I heard there was, there was mosquitoes, yeah.
Any more questions for Marty? How about Christian?
Oh, Marty, Tom, thank you for filling up that hole on the...
Three one, two hundred blocks out.
Yeah, but it'd be nice to have these streets there, that particular block. That particular block, um, up mass.
Guess who?
I have nothing to add to the report if there's any questions on it.
Okay, do you have any questions for Roger?
You make good coffee.
Thank you. Consider him for leaving.
No more questions for Roger? Let's move on to Chief.
Uh, the one thing that I didn't put in mind was that the firing rate deal, we're gonna just not even do that because of the expense we'd have to put in for liability insurance to the city, because it costs too much. And me having to supply poor Clinton down there all day long to watch the people shoot. So anyways, we're not going to do that, so it's not going to be anything anymore. The concealed carry classes, I'll still allow them to go out there and do everything because they need to actually shoot to qualify. So that'll be something that'll be, okay, it's still to do. But other than that, I haven't been further report. Unless you all got any questions?
Not, thank you, sir. Angela?
I've been working on budgets, so that's, I don't want to report.
I think so. Guess who's been getting bored, yours?
No.
All right, then we're ready for you, I guess.
On Saturday at two thirty-five in the afternoon, you may have noticed we have a power outage. We got a notification from West Star that they had an auto reclose that affected our Florence Junction. So if anybody remembers having a power outage on Saturday around two thirty, it was West Star. It was the supplier coming into town, a localized problem.
I know of one house that was really hit before that, and that other that just came, and I was lying in my high-priced hotel. But is there any kind of damage there on our, our city property?
We have not been aware of any sort of damage to the utilities. Also, I went and spoke to the county commission this morning to reiterate the involvement that the county would have with the city in rebuilding Fourth Street. The outtake is the county would provide equipment and materials for reestablishing the base of Fourth Street. The city would actually remove the road, road bed materials in place right now and haul them away. County would do the equipment and materials for reestablishing the base material before the pour. And the county would also, at this point, had a motion this morning that was approved for adding thirty-two thousand dollars to the city for repairs of that street in addition to helping us rebuild the base. I have invited or made myself available that we will be talking to engineering. And if we get involved in the Williams Street repair, working with the county fixing the third and Williams area there to include both drainage and a better access to the parking areas.
How does that equate to our, their original discussion?
The original discussion a year ago said they were going to provide sixty-two thousand dollars, but of that eighteen thousand dollars was already committed by the city, and they were going to use that as a credit. So it was equivalent at forty-four thousand dollars approximately that the county was going to provide assistance for. The materials, however, for the road bed were not thoroughly decided at that point. And with action of the county commission today, they said they would provide all the materials necessary for reestablishing the base on the road. So with the reestablishment of the base, the trucks, the grader needed to distribute it, plus the thirty-two thousand dollars, it's a very comparable offer.
I thought it was closer to eighty.
It was sixty-two thousand, and then we were going to give them the eighteen thousand dollar credit. The eighteen thousand dollars was billed about ten months ago, and it has been paid. So that, we don't have any outstanding issues as far as city contribution to the chapter project.
Are we going to try to save those bricks?
The bricks, at this point, we would anticipate trying to save. We would have to modify our sales procedure for bricks because right now it's ten cents, ten cents a brick. And quite honestly, with the price of labor and the price of machinery, it's easier just to throw it in the dump bed, haul it out to the rock dump, and if people want to pick them out, they can.
But don't pick them in their firms out there buying that brick?
I have not been aware of one, and you also got to consider that Fourth Street right now, about half of that is no longer brick. But any brick, we will skin coat and take the brick down to the shop. But as far as a major reclamation of the brick, there is not anything anticipated. But we'll take the bucket along and skin the brick off and throw them in the truck and get them out to the, to the city shop. But anything ancillary to that will go into the rock dump.
Christian, you have any more?
It's too good to throw away. I don't think, might try to sell them on eBay.
Any further discussion for...
Shipping week.
No further discussion. Let's go on to our public forum. Do we have any, what in our public forum that wants to speak at this time? No public forums, so we will move right on then, and I want to call a three-minute recess before we go into our executive session. But I would like to move an executive session of ten minutes with just the council to discuss non-elected personnel's, uh, senior ministry, favor's evaluation. And then we'll follow that, we'll follow them in that one to include Mr. Kalin. So I would move that to second.
Mayor, will there be action on any of this?
There probably won't. It's just going to be a discussion with him and the council at this time, as far as I know. Anyone else think that there'd be any action? He'll let you know if there is.
Okay.
Or we will.
Thank you.
Uh, is there a second?
Well, that's an option too.
Well, that's an option too.
If you see any blue smoke down here, you know that there's action. Second?
Second.
Second about Todd, all those in favor, raise your right hand, opposed? Okay, we'll wait for ten minutes, ten to three minutes.